Ms. Hall, after thirty-two years is hanging up a chart. So congratulations, and I will let someone you have to present the...
I want that to go away. Presented to Donna M. Hall, Instructional Technology Resource Teacher, Federal Programs Department, in appreciation for thirty-two years of faithful service to Henry County, Henry County School District System's School Board members, Superintendent staff. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, well, go ahead and do what you're... Basically, you just need to tell us what's next.
Family, taking care of Carrie Hall, making sure she's happy and healthy, and operation backpack, and lots of volunteer work.
Okay, great, thank you, congratulations, thank you for your service.
Mr. Paletti, may I just say something?
Yes.
So, Jesus says, "Love one another," and this is what I know about Donna Hall. She is a helper, a worker, a go-getter, and we're going to wish you...
And now, we're going to recognize Rebecca Pratt for sixteen years of service to our schools.
Aren't they leaving? This is presented to Rebecca J. Pratt, teacher at Upstate Grove Elementary School, in appreciation for sixteen years of faithful service to Henry County, Henry County District School System, School Board members, Superintendent staff. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Family, church, and art gallery, and other community...
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Seeing that we have all this excitement going on, you're welcome to stay if you like. You have to leave or understand.
Before people take off, I need to mention that we would have recognized Lynn Davidson, who had forty-something years?
It's on here.
Experience...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine years' experience with Henry County schools. And she was scheduled to be here tonight, but her mother fell and they had to go to the hospital. So she has the plaque, and I just wanted to put it in the record that we were going to recognize her. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. This time, we have any system comment in the item at this time. Our next item, sir, is our hearing, adoption of the 2019 budget at halftime.
Ms. McCarty?
Good evening. Last Tuesday, as you recall, interim CFO Yanisak did present your review with you, the budget document, the preliminary budget document. I think you all have a copy of it. Today, our goal is to meet the Florida statutes by properly reviewing and approving resolutions. For the board to approve the tentative budget mileage rate and the budget, and announcing the meeting for the public hearing, which will be held on September 5th. Florida statutes require that the first topic of discussion will be the increase, if any, of the new mileage rate of the rollback rate. What is the rollback rate? I know we've talked about this, but the rollback rate is the mileage rate that would generate the same amount of revenue, of property tax revenue, as approved for the prior year using the new taxable levies, minus the allowance for new construction. So the state rollback rate is 3.8869. The local rollback rate is 2.1709, for a combined total of 6.0578. The recommended rate for the school board of Henry County includes the required local effort of 3.798, the discretionary mileage of .748, and the capital outlay of 1.50, for a total of 6.046. This is a decrease from the rollback rate of .19%. Ergo, we don't have to discuss the reason for an increase in the voltage. It's actually a decrease. And as we discussed, the final hearing will be held on September 5th at 5:30 at the Cluiston Suboffice. So, and as we discussed at the last meeting, the preliminary budget, which you have, is good, but we will have time between now and the final budget to make some refinements for the expected revenues and expected expenditures for the fiscal year 1920. Your approval of the preliminary budget today in the amount of $93,025,961 will allow me the opportunity just that to make the required changes so that our budget will actually reflect what we're going to be doing over the next calendar year, over the next fiscal year. I know the superintendent is planning to recommend approval of the 1920 budget, tentative budget, to the chairman, and that's going to be in the amounts of the total amount of $93,025,961. So I don't know if you'd like to go over that. I think I have covered the mandatory requirements per Florida statutes, but I think that you also have something that you would like to discuss. And I'm also available to address any questions about what we've done for this 2019-20 preliminary or tentative budget.
Do we have any additional comments from the public on the tax and budget at this time? No comments, or that now that we're here and now we're closed, and chair also asked to attend for recommendation of the mileage rate?
Mr. Chair, I recommend the adoption of the mileage rate levy resolution as follows. The taxing authority is the district school board of Henry County. The state rollback rate is 3.8869 mils. The local rollback rate is 2.1709 mils. And the total rollback rate decrease is .19 mils. As chair, I further recommend... Do we do... I can do it all at once. Okay, I further recommend the following mileage levies. The general operating mileage levy, including the prior period adjustment of 3.798 mils. The basic discretionary mileage levy for general operating, .748 mils. And the basic discretionary mileage levy for capital outlay, 1.5 mils. For a total mileage levy for the tentative budget of 6.046 mils.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion? Both? Motion carried. Next item, sir.
Mr. Chair, I further recommend approval of the 2019-20 tentative budget in the following amounts. Fund One, General, $68,822,768. Fund Two, Internal Service, $3,45,576. Fund Three, Capital Projects, $5,991,991,108. Fund Four, Special Revenues, $10,428,578. Fund Seven, Internal Service, $1,722,778. And Fund Eight, Trust and Agency, $3,015,153, for a total budget of $93,025,961.
Do we have a motion? So moved?
Second.
This time, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chair, I further recommend approval of the committed fund ballots resolution.
A recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This time, we close the terms of hearing and proceed to our figure table. Thank you. Next item, sir, is the old business...
Old Business Hearing, Proposed Revision for Policy 1362. Is this going to be permission to advertise?
This is the hearing to adopt.
Okay, this is the one that we had sent through, and the attorney redid some words. And so I think accommodate some issues that we had had to recently deal with. And it's my recommendation that we approve Policy 1362.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I would just, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to thank Administration and Legal Services for wordsmithing, going back and taking a look at that policy and wordsmithing that to ensure that we don't have recurring problems like we had recently.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Hold on just a minute, I got thrown off. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of proposed revisions as advertised. Policies 1430.10, 343.10, 443.10, 5112, 5500, 6490, 6830, 8330, and 8405.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like a little clarification, further clarification on Policy 6490 regarding legal services for employees, officers, and public officials. Are you there?
Yes.
Available? Okay. On, it has, you know, legal services for employees and officers. On option two, it says, the one that was checked, may provide legal services when officers, employees of the board are charged with civil or criminal actions arising out of and in the course of the performance of their assigned duties and responsibilities. Would this language provide the opportunity for the respondent to choose their own legal representation? Or am I reading this too literally, saying, "We're going to provide you," kind of like a public defender, like, "Here's your public defender." Or, "We're going to choose that"?
If I may, the way this works is that the person, the person against whom the allegations are made can choose their own counsel. However, if they choose the entire faculty of the Stanford Law School as their counsel, the board doesn't have to pay for it. In other words, the board has the discretion to say, "No, that's too much. We think a reasonable fee would be less." So there's no guarantee or indemnity that every penny of cost that, you know, a person incurs is going to be reimbursed. But you certainly have that right and that option to choose your own counsel under this. And then if you're successful, you come back to the board for reimbursement for a reasonable fee.
And right underneath that, it says, like, "In any case where the officer or employee pleads guilty or no contest or is found guilty of any such action, the officer or employee shall reimburse the board for any legal services supplied by the board." If that results in their dismissal, do we still have a leg to stand on in recovering that money?
Yes and no. Your right to recover is really theoretical. It's very difficult to recoup money under those circumstances. So another thing that's baked in the cake here is the board has the discretion of saying, "Okay, we're going to reimburse you for your reasonable fees monthly as we go along, while we're going to say, 'Good luck, come back when it's over.'" That's also in the board's discretion.
And that's what has happened in the past, okay?
Most of the time, that's what happened.
Most of the time, it was, "When you're done, come back here."
I mean, I just want to ensure that we're not ponying up for somebody's...
A lost cause.
Lost cause.
Right, but there could be circumstances where the board's willing to pay as they go along, you know, depending on the board's assessment of the situation. You have that discretion. And this is based on statute, by the way. We don't have a whole lot of discretion here, except at the discretion points that I mentioned in my remarks.
And when it talks about, at the bottom of the policy, "Payments of judgments rendered against board members or elected superintendents shall be made in accordance with Florida law." Is that saying that the, say, "I get hit with a $5,000 fine"? Is that saying that... What does the law say? Does the board pay that, or is that on the...
A fine is not a judgment. If you get a judgment against you in your individual capacity, the board has no obligation to reimburse you for individual debt that you might incur. And it's, if you really want to get into the weeds, it's unlikely that you're going to be left by yourself under state law. But under federal law, a board member who knowingly violates United States Constitution and civil rights and those things against the advice of your attorney, you're swinging on your own all the way.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, sir.
The next item is ratification of the 2019-21, 2019-20 Henry County Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Is there someone here from the association who's willing to speak? And did everyone get a copy of this letter? Okay, as you're working your way up, I'd like to read this letter from Mrs. Sted. "Date of July 30th, Dear Board Members, I regret that I cannot attend tonight's board meeting, but I ask to have this letter read into the board minutes on my behalf. On behalf of the Henry County Education Association, we would like to thank Mr. Paletti, Mr. Swindle, and Mrs. Jones for their collaborative work on the contract for the 2019-20-20 school year. We were able to work diligently towards an agreement due to the ongoing communication we have had over the past year with Mr. Paletti about focusing our efforts and discussions on the best salary schedule to recruit and retain high-quality teachers to our district. Recovering steps for veteran teachers has been a difficult and cumbersome task in the past, but we believe this will raise morale across the district and send an even more positive and enthusiastic tone for the 2019-20 school year, based on the 96% vote to ratify the contract for our district's teachers. Neither the district or ACEA rarely has a chance to say that the negotiation process is exactly a pleasant or usually a quick exercise. It is often daunting simply due to the volume of material we must cover and the limitations of budgeting. This year, our mutual goals were to be laser-focused, and we were able to realize the budget available to adequately fund our goals. Through our active communication with the district, the Henry County Education Association looks forward to continued collaborative partnerships with the release of best and brightest money from the state at any upcoming discussions over the Guardian program. Thank you again for a contract decision prior to the start of the 2019-20 school year. The teachers of Henry County are looking forward to a wonderful school year for everyone." And this is from Kimberly Sted, President of the Henry County Education Association.
Yes, it was a speedy and very pleasant experience. We've negotiated for several years with a different team of district-side people. This year, we asked Mr. Paletti to step up and be the chief negotiator for the district, and he said yes, and he came to the table with his team. And like it said in the letter, kind of a laser focus from both sides on what we wanted to get done. And it really was expeditious and beneficial on both sides. We came to an agreement that gave the district an enticing salary and benefits package for hopefully not just hiring, but retaining some quality teachers, and gave some of our veteran teachers that bumps that they had withheld for a few years and been so disgruntled over every year when we have salary negotiations. It doesn't matter how much money we negotiate and get them. They say things like, "Yeah, what am I getting in my step?" You know, so now that we've come to an agreement, not just on language about things like steps, but gotten them to the point that everyone's where they should be moving forward, should be a much smoother process.
Thank you. And in your packet or in your work, there is a copy of the contract. This was the... Last year, they did a full book. So this year, you don't have a lot of language to deal with, but we did things like eliminate the 20-year cap on experience levels. And I think that's reflected what we did. You know, we have been able to recruit back some teachers, to attract back some who have left in. Okay? And we are in the best position for hiring that we have been in my memory. And while that paper looks a little daunting, remember, at this point last year, we were upwards to 30 or 40 vacancies. That number there represents the fact that we have, we have a full staff with the fewest number of starting subs that we've had in a while and we're in recent memory. And we have a few days left for hiring. So I expect that to be better, okay? Now, one of the things that has never really happened to us before is we were on this end of the county particularly, and it has some effect in Cluiston. We were very fortunate to have many Lee County teachers apply to teach at Henry County. And these were veteran, good, highly effective, and effective teachers who wanted to come here. It was, I guess, a result of some of the issues that had happened in Lee County that the teachers decided that it could be worth their while to move here and teach and still maintain the residence, although we would love for them to move here. We also have a better benefits package that finally came to light when people were working. So it was a very good process that we worked through with ACEA. This is the first time, I think, that, with the exception of Dr. Burr, that any of you have seen us start the school year with a settled teacher's contract. And that works well for morale across the board. Our teachers this past year, and we're going to have a presentation to go into that, have stepped up to the plate, and they've earned it. And we're very happy to be able to do this for them. So it is my recommendation that we approve that the board ratified the 2019-20-20 Henry County Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, sir.
No, we've got that add-on.
Okay, we have under Action Items E, new personnel allocation requests. These are for avid teachers that will be used to alleviate class size over, alleviate class size issues. These are Title IV money, coming out of Title IV money. It will not be out of general fund. It was asked, the ask was given, and I sent it back because we didn't see where it was being paid. So the reason I don't ordinarily put this to you on a walk-in, on a walk-on, but because of the nature of what held mean it and proximity to the beginning of school, I wanted you folks to be able to vote on this.
You have a recommendation?
Recommendation is to approve the personnel allocation requests.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Paletti, are the, what are the chances of this Title IV money running out and we have to switch them back to general fund like we have done in the past with other...
There's no chance.
No chances of that happening?
No chance. And when that happens, Mr. Bass, what it's to make is to squeeze as much money as we can out of the both budgets. But this one will not float back and forth like you see with an IDA grant or something of that nature.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I do support these positions. I know how many people, parents, students, and even teachers who have benefited greatly for the kids going through the avid program and given those the academic and life skills preparation for, you know, your secondary schools. So I think that's a, it's a wise investment of Title IV funds.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, sir.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of the consent agenda.
You have a recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Could, every year, I have an issue with the Presence Learning Contract. Every year. The fiscal impact of this contract, according to the detailed agenda, is $327,000. And what Presence Learning is, is essentially online speech therapy. And I opted, my child qualified for it, I opted him out because I just questioned the effectiveness of it. I know it's really expensive, but I always question the effectiveness. I've opted him out so he could not lose that instructional time. And I realize where it's a convenience. I understand our challenges here in Henry County with getting qualified, especially, you know, specialty, what I consider as kind of specialty positions, in front of kids. And, but I think it's really worth that effort to try to do so, especially like when you're considering, you know, paying $327,000 for a service. And I don't think it's what I want for my child. I don't want it for any of the other 7,400 kids in the district.
It's, I can't, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Sted to speak to this. We have to do this and then not try to get somebody, okay? But we have to have something in place. And that, I know that's not optimal. But in order to get us in compliance, we do these things as we continue to search. I don't know, have you, Dr. Sted, have you interviewed or had any bites on any of these positions?
We advertise every summer, and every summer I say, "I'm going to do no online..." Stand up, I'm sorry. "I'm going to do no online speech therapy." And every summer, I'm disappointed because I cannot, I, we cannot. And it's not just a Henry County problem, it is across the state. So I have tried, I found one, and I have one onsite, and I need about six more. I just, I have to do something. And we also have two online, two of the elementary schools still, but we're using Selyant, so it's a different type of contract. But it is still an online therapy as well.
That's why this comes to you not at the beginning of the summer, but toward the end of the summer?
Yes.
In case, in case we hit the jackpot and have people...
Yeah, miracle falls in the lap.
Do we still have an active contract with Arder? Ardoor?
Arder, no.
Or are we using any kind of...
Selyant.
Selyant?
Yes, ma'am.
And they are our head, basically our headhunter for these OTs and PTs?
Yes, yes. And the one onsite that I found this year is a Selyant one. But I, they couldn't find me anymore either.
It's unfortunate because out in these rural, economically-challenged communities, sometimes that whatever services those kids are getting at school are the only services they get.
Exactly.
And they, they should absolutely be high bothering, and it's, I mean, it's...
And I've even taken on a couple of SLPAs, or at least we are training a couple just with the people that we have, so that we'll be able to lead them onsite as well. But it's just a matter of time, because it takes two or three years to get them trained so they're able to do services on their, on their own with supervision. So I'm looking at every option, I promise.
I know, it's just, it's, you know, looking at these kids and their needs, it's hard to...
I get it, I want to get it.
For them what I want for mine.
Me too. Me too.
Thank you. Any further discussion, consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know I seem to be the supplement guy here, asking about supplements... Um, I know I seem to be the supplement guy here, asking about supplements all the time. I, I see we've got four more supplements, um, on our list here in our consent agenda. Like, uh, athletic director and, and then band and the two AGs. Can we not roll those into their regular salaries and include all of that? We're not, I, I mean, that's their jobs anyway, let's, let's make whatever it is to pay them an extra supplement. I'm not sure what the rest of the board feels about like that, but, um, I just, and it doesn't even have what the supplements are here, what are we paying them in supplements? It just has supplements. What is the cost, what's the cost to us? I'd like to see that. At least I know what I'm approving.
Remember reading what you, you're talking about, what letter is that under the consent agenda?
Probably under personnel.
Personnel, that's correct.
Really?
When I, when I hear your concerns, I think about rolling it into a salary. Let's take for example, um, an athletic director who served as a head coach. But like I know the LaBelle Athletic Director is no longer the head coach. And so i- I could see it getting real dicey saying, all right, well, here's, here's your salary. And then, okay, so you're not gonna do the head coaching thing this year, you know, how do you take that back?
It doesn't, that's, it doesn't say anything about coaching, it just says athletic director.
No, but what you're saying is if you tie that to a salary, you're tying that to a position.
It isn't.
Not necessarily, because what Mrs. Bucis is trying to say is, for instance, in Clueston, the head coach is the athletic director. So that means if we did that forevermore, whoever the head coach football is gonna be is gonna be the athletic director. In LaBelle, we have someone who was the head coach who is still the AD and we assign a supplement rather than tying it to that position. And so that's where the problem is gonna be. Now, we can get you the numbers put on your contract that you have, you should have the, um, supplement scale.
That's what I said.
Yep, it's in the contract in the back, it's a supplement appendix. And you can multiply that by the beginning salary to get the, the supplement.
And it wouldn't be just easy to print right here so I can see it and I don't have to go do all that stuff? I mean, I'd like, um, I, I just use athletic director because it was the first one on top of your list and I'm not trying to pick on any athletic directors.
Yeah.
Or, or anything like that. I mean, same thing with AG, you know, we got vocational AG people.
I'm, I'm gonna talk about the AG person because that person is on call twenty-four seven.
Which one, there's two of them on the list.
Well, right, but there's a main one who's on call twenty-four seven who has to answer the calls. The cows are loose out on the street.
Yeah.
Or out on the road, you gotta go get them yet. So there, and that's around the clock. So it would be hard to say to roll that one into the, uh, salary even though the AG teacher is gonna be the, getting the supplement, okay? Unless you wanted to start paying time and a half. And you could argue about the salary position, but a salary position can be paid time and a half and can be, um, can be taken to the wage of our people over that.
How's a salary position paid time and a half, I'm not understanding?
Because if it's not management, it is an employee and a teacher is not management.
Okay, I've never heard that. Okay. I'm gonna, um.
Uh, we can, we can get you these costs and these figures, so is Ms. Ricardi still here? Could, could you calculate for him so that we can get that to him?
I would like to, I, I think I asked for this once before. I would like to have a list of every supplement we have, the description of it and what did, what it actually is.
Your supplement list is in the contract.
The entire supplement list is there?
The supplement list is in the contract.
And their description, what they do is in it?
We don't necessarily have descriptions for supplements because those are not full-time positions.
Can we, can we have a, a list of what they're, so how do we know what they're supposed to do? We don't have a job title for them or a duty.
Well, basically, when it says golf coach, we assume they're gonna be a coach of golf.
Yeah, well, you assume, but you know what happens when you assume?
I, I get, I, 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 I get both sides here. Let me just jump up in here and muddy the waters some more. And so what I'm seeing is like, I think what you want is every, tell me if I'm wrong, a, a list of every person who receives a supplement there and whatever you, you, I mean, because you can do a lot of legwork and like use your index and try to figure out what their salary is and do all the math, it takes a long time. But just to say, okay, I want to know all the supplements, whoever, what teachers and how much is the value of their supplement?
And what is their, what's their, yeah, what are they supposed to be doing for that supplement exactly?
Okay, okay, so you want like job descriptions and not values of supplements?
Right, I know, I wanna know if, if we're paying a football coach, what is his exact duty for that? Is he just, I'm just using football, it's the first thing that came to my mind. Is, you know, he is the, the head football coach, he gets paid two thousand dollars for a season?
If, if, if you are after the truth of the supplement, I understand what you're saying because sometimes people are appointed to things that are not the case. And I get what you're saying. I think I can go out on a limb and say weight trading at Clueston High School might be one where somebody's not an actual weight trading coach, whereas in LaBelle they are. I can get that and I can get that to you. And we could provide the list now. We would be hard pressed to develop because it has not been developed job descriptions for every supplemented position. Because I'm assuming you don't, again, I don't wanna assume anything, but I don't think you're just talking about supplements for sports. I think you're talking about supplements for clubs and organizations at the high school and middle school and elementary school level.
Correct, everything we pay a supplement for. What are we exactly paying it for? I mean, other than just saying lead teacher supplement, what is the lead teacher, what is their duty is what I'm saying. Because there's a lot of supplements we're paying that I don't know exactly what their duties are.
For example, for a lead teacher, you would have to revert back to the contract to see what a lead teacher's duties are.
Can we, that's what I'm asking, can we have a list printed up with all of that so that we know exactly what their duties are and what it's costing us? That's what I'm asking.
We can work together and I'm gonna have to work together with the ADs on both ends of the county, but yes, we can. And for academic supplements at the middle and elementary and high school levels, the club and academics, you're gonna have to understand that sometimes the contract says elementary schools, you have four, okay? We don't have four like things in our six different elementary schools. So the principal may say, okay, you get it for the sunshine committee. Making sure that we remember everybody's birthdays. You do it for parent teacher, uh, organizations. So that's what we're gonna come up with, that you're gonna have some individualization in the six elementaries. But we will work on this at some point. I said for it might be five or six, I don't know. But I mean, the elementary schools do have some, and the elementaries are the least of our worries because they have fewer than anybody else. But there is some ability to individualize for the needs of those schools at the elementary level. So that one might be hard to get a job description unless we tell you, for instance, the sunshine committee means that we recognize birthdays of staff and family members.
That's, that's exactly what I'm asking for right there. Because there's a lot of things, I mean, like I said, we're paying out a lot of money in supplements and I'm just, I just don't know what all we're paying these supplements for, what they, what the descriptions are, what are they supposed to be doing, um, for this money? I'm just kinda curious on what all this is. I'd like to see a list of everything and their duties so that we, we know.
We will start working on that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Kevin, next item, sir.
I just want to take this moment to point out to the board the amount of work you have done in forty-five minutes. And this is phenomenal, thank you very much. Uh, Board Member Business, Heartland Education Consortium, Dues and Resolution to Continue Participation for the coming school year, I recommend approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, sir.
We need, and I recommend permission to advertise proposed policy revisions.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
And we need a point.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Kevin, how you gonna get it, sir?
I need appointments to the Value Adjustment Board.
I'll, I'll stay there.
I'm gonna need a broken room.
Yeah, I need assistance.
I, I got a, I got a motion on that one, can I get a second? I'll take her, don't worry.
Thank you, I got to, I kinda enjoy it.
Do we need to appoint Amon to?
Yes.
And we will, I've asked him, he will agree, Amon Kaki to be our representative.
All right. The items?
Test scores and school grades presentation. Folks, we have some areas of concern, but we have many areas to celebrate. The fact that we have a high school and a middle school that have earned a B. The fact that we have one school that's not one percentage point away from an A, a point away from an A. And the fact that the district as a whole is one point away from a D is cause to celebrate. Clueston Middle is still on our radar. LaBelle Elementary needed to close the gap and get out of the F and they did so by moving from an F to a C in one year. So that's very good. They're still a low three hundred, so there is work to be done there. Clueston Middle has additional work that they need to do and assistance is coming in from the state. We're very pleased with Central, we're very pleased, but we're pleased with everybody, okay? But to be one point away from an A, we are probably looking at filing an appeal with the state.
Yeah.
Just to look at some of our learning gains in the low per, twenty-fifth percentile in math to make sure there's not a point, not a percent, a point there that we can't take or can't claim. So that's a far cry from where we've been. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Ms. Durand, who's gonna go over this with you.
I've given you all a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to present. It closely out, so.
I think I'm blocking the phones. I was threatening not to unblock it.
Did you all receive the data that I sent to you prior to, um, the school grades coming out? This is a lot of that same data, I just put it, it'd be a little easier to understand and to read.
Well, they may have, for the benefit of the audience, let's go over it so that they can.
Okay. Um, the components for calculating school grades, um, there are four achievement components that the state looks at, and it's English, Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. These components include student performance on statewide standardized assessments, including the comprehensive assessments and in the course, from here on I'll refer to them as EOC assessments. The components measure the percentage of full year enrolled students who achieved a passing score. So these students have to be here for both FTE counts in order for their scores to count towards, um, the grading system. Okay, for our third grade, the English, Language Arts proficiency, the state average, um, fifty-eight percent, district forty-seven percent. And when I say proficiency, the scores come out one through five and three through five is considered proficient. So when I'm saying proficiency, I mean levels three, four, and five.
Yes, ma'am. Does, doesn't three indicate satisfactory and then four is a proficient? Do they consider three through five a proficient?
Three through five is proficient.
Counting like, right?
Yes, yes. And then I broke it down into each, um, school. Country Oaks with fifty-three percent proficient, Central Elementary fifty-one percent proficient, LaBelle Elementary forty-seven percent, West Side Elementary forty-seven percent, East Side forty-three percent, and Up the Grove thirty-nine percent. With fourth grade, state fifty-eight percent, district forty-eight percent. And then there on the side you'll see, um, Central fifty-five percent, LES forty-seven, Up the Grove forty-seven, and then the other three, Country Oaks, East Side, West Side, all at forty-six percent. With our fifth grade, state fifty-six percent and district forty-seven percent. Central sixty-two percent, um, Up the Grove fifty-five percent. You'll see with those two schools, they were even above the state average. West Side forty-nine percent, Country Oaks forty-eight, East Side thirty-seven, and LaBelle Elementary thirty-three. With sixth grade, um, we have fifty-four percent for the state, forty-one percent for the district. LaBelle Middle School at forty-two percent and Clueston Middle School at thirty-eight percent. Seventh grade with ELA, state fifty-two percent, district thirty-eight percent. LaBelle Middle was at forty-three percent, Clueston Middle thirty-two percent. Eighth grade with ELA, state fifty-six percent, district forty-three percent. LaBelle Middle forty-eight percent, Clueston Middle School forty percent. Then ninth, whoa. I was saying, I don't know what happened.
Are you going up? It looks like you're going forward, so.
I don't know, I'm not, I wasn't touching it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
For ELA in ninth grade, state fifty-five percent, district forty-four percent. LaBelle High at forty-six percent, Clueston High forty-two percent.
Maybe that's why it's all right.
I didn't touch it, I just put it.
There are so many things going on with our electronics because of all the work that's going around. If you just want to go over this, that would be.
No.
He's over there, he's over there pulling the cord. He's not.
Okay, we're gonna try it one more time. We think we know what happened. I just wanted to make sure that you all stayed for a long time tonight.
And really, there, there was some pretty impressive eighth grade scores and I thought you wanted to, the board would like to see in math particularly.
In math? You haven't gotten to math yet, so did you want it to go back?
Okay.
So it wasn't one that I had already done or is it one I had already done?
Uh, no.
Okay. Language Arts, tenth grade. Okay, state fifty-three percent, district thirty-eight percent, LaBelle High thirty-eight percent. Okay, state fifty-three percent, district thirty-eight percent, Lavelle High thirty-eight percent, Clovis and High thirty-seven percent. Now in math proficiency, third grade, state sixty-two percent, district fifty-two percent. Here we have Central Elementary at sixty-three percent, again, above the state average. Westside Elementary fifty-three percent, Lavelle Elementary fifty-two percent, Eastside fifty-one percent, Up the Grove forty-six, Country Oaks forty-five. Fourth grade math, state sixty-four percent, district fifty-seven percent. Here we have Westside Elementary and Central both being above, or Central was right at the state average. Westside above the state average at sixty-nine percent. Central sixty-three percent, Eastside fifty-five, Up the Grove fifty-four, Country Oaks fifty-three, and Lavelle Elementary fifty-three. Fifth grade math, state sixty percent, district fifty-three percent. Eastside and Central both being above state average, Eastside at seventy percent proficient, Central sixty-three percent. Country Oaks fifty-three percent, Up the Grove forty-eight, Westside forty, and Lavelle Elementary thirty-seven percent. Sixth grade math, state fifty-five percent, district forty-three percent. Lavelle Middle School fifty-three percent, which is very close to the state average, which is quite difficult for middle school. And Clovis and Middle at thirty-two percent. Proficiency in seventh grade math, state fifty-four percent, district forty-two percent. Lavelle Middle School, right there at the state, with fifty-three percent, and Clovis and Middle thirty percent. Math proficiency, eighth grade, state forty-six percent, district thirty percent. Lavelle Middle forty-one percent, Clovis and Middle sixteen percent. Algebra, algebra proficiency, state sixty-one percent, district thirty-eight percent. Lavelle Middle at ninety-five percent proficient, Clovis and Middle fifty-two percent. Clovis and High twenty-eight percent, Lavelle High twenty-one percent. And if I may, I think a lot of times what happens at the high school level is so many eighth graders take algebra in middle school. And then, you know, the middle schools get those scores, and then the students who do not take algebra or who do not pass algebra in the eighth grade, go on to high school and maybe they are not ready, quite ready for algebra. And they, you know, those are the remaining students that take the algebra EOC in high school. And then it, you know, brings the percentage lower. Geometry proficiency, state fifty-seven percent, district forty percent. You'll see Lavelle Middle and Clovis and Middle both were well above the state average. Um, Lavelle Middle School had a hundred percent proficient, Clovis and Middle seventy-six proficient. Lavelle High forty-one percent, Clovis and High twenty-three percent. And a lot of times the same thing happens, they take it in middle school, um, and so the middle schools, you know, get, you know, those points. Science, the fifth grade proficiency, state fifty-three percent, district forty-one percent. Central Elementary, again, above the state average at sixty-three percent, Up the Grove forty-four percent, Eastside forty percent, Westside thirty-seven percent. Lavelle Elementary thirty-four percent, Country Oaks thirty-three percent.
Before you go on, this is the area where the elementary schools can get the biggest bang for the buck. And if they will look at Central, if they will share data and information, this will help things move in the right direction for the elementaries. If you see that gap, okay, between South and Central, there's a twenty-three point difference. It's not as if those are different students. Okay, I think if we just, if we just replicate to the best of our abilities, what's going on in Central with every other elementary school in the district, we will have dividends paid greatly at the fifth grade level.
Science proficiency for eighth grade, state forty-eight percent, district thirty-seven percent, Lavelle Middle forty-three percent, Clovis and Middle thirty-one percent. Biology proficiency, state sixty-seven percent, district sixty-five percent. Lavelle High School was well above the state average at eighty-two percent, and Clovis and High School at fifty-four percent.
Ms. Durants, can you, like, in a, in a situation like the biology proficiency, you have got Lavelle High School who's just, I mean, statistically blowing it out of the water, can you trace those scores back to teachers, a particular teacher?
Yes.
The schools can, yes.
Yes.
I don't have that, I mean, I, I could find out, but yes, those can be traced back to a teacher.
We do that.
Yeah. Because if you're, if you're pulling numbers like that, you deserve to be celebrated and recognized.
Yeah. Civics proficiency, state seventy-one percent, district fifty-six percent. Lavelle Middle was at sixty-two percent, Clovis and Middle at forty-nine percent. US History proficiency, state seventy percent, district sixty-two percent. Clovis and High was very close to the state average at sixty-eight percent, Lavelle High fifty-nine percent. Okay, for learning gains, that's another area where, um, the state looks to see learning gains. There's learning gains in English Language Arts, learning gains in math. Learning gains for lowest performing twenty-five percent of students in English Language Arts, and learning gains for lowest performing twenty-five percent of students in mathematics. And I will talk a little bit more about this when we get into the particular schools. These components include student performance on statewide standardized assessments, including EOCs, EOC assessments for the current year and the prior year. The components measure the percentage of full-year enrolled students who achieve a learning gain from the prior year to the current year. So our learning gains for English Language Arts, I've got all the schools listed there. Central had sixty-three percent, Up the Grove fifty-eight percent, Westside fifty-three percent. Lavelle Elementary fifty-two percent, Country Oaks fifty percent, Eastside forty-nine percent. Lavelle Middle had fifty-six percent, Lavelle High forty-eight percent, Clovis and High forty-five percent, Clovis and Middle forty-four percent. The learning gains for ELA for the lowest performing twenty-five percent of students. How the state figures the lowest twenty-five performing, the lowest performing twenty-five percent of students, Mrs. Carter and I were just in my office crunching these numbers, um, and it's very complex what they do. To determine who the lowest performing twenty-five percent of students are. It doesn't, they don't say the lowest performing for third grade, lowest performing for fourth grade, they combine all of them together. And then they have to fall into the category of the lowest twenty-five, and then they have to, in order to get the gains, and they have to fall into rising above that twenty-five point five percent with their score. So it, it's a math that I don't know that I would ever figure out, but we've been playing with it, we're gonna continue playing with it.
I, I wanna talk to the board just a minute about this one too. Lavelle Elementary, sixty-one percent learning gains, that was our F school. Had Lavelle Elementary received another F, then I would have had to gone to the state board. Those of you who were here, when the state board was here, saw four superintendents go to state board. When they look at that, when that happens, learning gains go out the window, they're only looking at proficiency. Uh, Lavelle Elementary really helped us significantly by moving from F to a C because that sixty-one percent learning gain is the lowest performing twenty-five percent in English Language Arts would have meant nothing. Okay, and they would have looked at that figure of thirty-two or thirty-three percent, and that's what they would have made their decision on.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, because there are times that the learning gains are, I mean, learning gains are always important. I mean, I always said that I, you know, when I was in the classroom, I always wanted to see a student grow, but what Mr. Fludd is talking about, when it comes to that, they don't look at that.
What, what people, they'll look at our proficiency rate, and I'm still after everybody to aim for at least F, fifty percent. And so they'll look at a proficiency rate that is like forty-seven percent. Well, how in the world did you get a B or a C? It's because calculating the learning gains. But what would happen, and I'm just telling you, hopefully we'll never encounter another F school, is that if you go for the second year for an F, learning gains do not matter at all, it's proficiency. What are your teachers doing to make sure there's a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of instruction?
So here for the, um, the lowest performing twenty-five percent of students for ELA, Central sixty-three percent, Lavelle Elementary sixty-one percent, Eastside forty-eight, Up the Grove forty-six, Country Oaks forty-two, Westside thirty-seven, Lavelle Middle forty-four, Lavelle High thirty-seven, Clovis and Middle thirty-six, Clovis and High thirty-three. And going through the information today, like I did and looking at it, I'm hoping to be able to help principals. A couple of them have contacted me about helping them with identifying their lowest twenty-five percent. So I'm hoping with, really looking at today and talking to the state and them breaking it down for me as well, I'll be able to help them with identifying who those lowest twenty-five are. Learning gains for math, Eastside had seventy-four percent, Central sixty-five percent, Country Oaks sixty-three, Up the Grove sixty-two, Westside fifty-eight, Lavelle Elementary forty-eight. Lavelle High sixty-one, Lavelle Middle sixty, Clovis and High thirty-seven, Clovis and Middle thirty-one. The learning gains in math for the lowest performing twenty-five percent of students, Eastside fifty-four percent, Central fifty-two, Country Oaks forty-eight, Up the Grove forty-seven, Westside thirty-eight, Lavelle Elementary thirty-two. Lavelle High sixty-two, Lavelle Middle forty-nine, Clovis and Middle thirty-three, Clovis and High thirty-one. Okay, middle, middle school acceleration, this also goes into the calculation when they're determining the school grades. This component is based on the percentage of eligible students who passed a high school level EOC assessment or industry certification. For Lavelle Middle, they had sixty-one percent, Clovis and Middle had sixty percent. Graduation rate, this applies to high schools. The graduation rate is based on an adjusted cohort of ninth grade students and measures whether the students graduate within four years. So they have, you know, they have to graduate within those four years, if they're lacking credits and they have to do some more courses than, than a lot of qualified Lavelle High School had eighty-nine percent graduation rate, Clovis and High had eighty percent graduation rate. College and career acceleration, this component is based on the percentage of graduates from the graduation rate cohort who earned a passing score on an acceleration examination. And for Henry County, we only do the AP, because of the advanced placement courses. Earned a passing grade in a dual enrollment course that qualified for college credit or earned an industry certification. Clovis and High had fifty-three percent, Lavelle High had forty-five percent.
That's due in large part to the collegiate academy over there.
Okay, now the school grades calculation. The points earned for each component are added together and divided by the total number of available points to determine the percentage of points earned. So an A is sixty-two percent of points or greater, a B is fifty-four percent to sixty-one percent of points, C forty-one percent and fifty-three percent of points, D thirty-two percent to forty percent of points, and F is thirty-one percent of points or less. So the school grades for two, comparing two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. And I put these in order, you know, I went from the highest to lowest. Um, Central Elementary sixty percent, which was a B in two thousand eighteen, sixty-one percent in two thousand nineteen. But not only was Central only one percentage point off from an A, it was only one point from an A. They earned four hundred thirty points, four hundred thirty-one points would have pushed them to an A. And I'll add to that in a minute. Eastside Elementary in two thousand eighteen, fifty-five percent, which gave them a B, and then this year fifty-four percent, which gave them a B. Country Oaks last year fifty-four percent, which was a C, this year it was forty-nine percent, remain to C. Up the Grove Elementary forty-nine percent C, last year and this year fifty-one percent C. Westside last year forty-seven percent, which was a C, this year forty-eight percent was a C. Lavelle Elementary, which is huge, last year twenty-eight percent, which was an F, this year forty-six percent, which was a C. For secondary, Clovis and High School last year was fifty-two percent, which was a C, this year forty-eight percent, which remained a C. Lavelle Middle last year fifty-one percent was a C, Lavelle Middle this year fifty-four percent, which earned them a B. Lavelle High School last year forty-seven percent, which was a C, this year fifty-seven percent, which earned them a B. Clovis and Middle School forty-five percent, last year a C, this year forty percent, which was a D. Again, with Clovis and Middle, not only were they just one percentage off from being a C, again, that was one point from a C. District grade, two thousand eighteen versus two thousand nineteen, last year fifty-two percent was a C, this year fifty-three percent was a C. Fifty-four percent would have been a B, we were one percent off from earning a B this year. And we were one point. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, any comments?
Mr. Chairman? Um, I want to thank you for the work you obviously put into this, this presentation. On the time I've sat on this board, this is the most comprehensive and transparent report that I believe that has come across the dais, because I'm sitting here. You know, I look at this and I, and I, you know, we ended on, on school grades. And I attended a conference this summer where the Department of Education Chancellor, Jacob Oliva, was speaking to us and he was talking to us about, for, for the foundation of how we tie our grants into strategic plans and show outcomes. And one of the things he said, and, and it resonated profoundly with me, was that whenever we start putting data out there, that people immediately get defensive, it makes people uncomfortable, and it should. It really and truly should, and I hope we do not focus on a, a letter grade assigned to a school, but to the, the data and, and staying laser focused on that. Because, you know, while you presented it, um, you know, the way you were presenting it, I'm over here being, being negative Nelly. And, and, you know, and when you talk about, you know, forty, we'll, we'll just go with third grade reading proficiency. You know, forty-seven percent proficient in the district, well, when I read that, I read fifty-three percent not proficient. And we have to just, just be relentlessly dedicated to flipping that, to getting more kids into, into the, the three and above category. And I don't wanna ever lose sight about that and get fired up about letter grades, because letter grades are very deceiving.
Fifty percent proficiency makes all the difference in the world in Henry County schools. That means that in every classroom, half of those students can score three or higher, that is doable. Now, looking at every, every school's results, there are some areas in every school to grow about. Even Clovis and Middle School, if you looked at some of their industry certification data, that's good. There are things good to be said everywhere, can it get better? Yes, I hope we never, as a district, think that we have hit the summit and cannot improve because we can't. But these are some of the best results that we've had since FSA, and these are, are the best results from FSA since FSA was instituted.
I mean, and I realize FSA is but a tool, it is, it is, it's a screenshot of a, of a, a small example of a student's performance. And, um, I just, but I, I, I just really don't wanna get focused on grades, but just staying laser focused on that data and, and trying to move that in a positive direction. But I do have a question on graduation rates. You know, that's something that we've been a feather in our caps, um, you know, with a nearly ninety percent graduation rate. And now I'm looking at, there's nine percent difference between Lavelle High School and Clovis and High School. And what can we attest those outcomes to?
We are working on that, and one of the, one of the differences is the tracking of the students at the school. To make sure that they are on target to graduate, to recruit those who may have dropped out, Lavelle does a much better job at that. And to look at our ESC population and to make sure that they are brought into the fold in terms of the graduation rate. Not saying that anything evil or wicked is happening in Clovis and they're just doing it better over here, and we need to replicate that over there. Now, to your point about grades, you're absolutely correct. However, the public looks at grades and major decisions are made by major companies based on our grades. That's why I've been very, during my six and a half, seven, whatever years, really focused on getting those grades to where they should be, they're not there yet. They're not there yet, but we are definitely, with this year's results, moving in the right direction. I think we're the only, I haven't looked at the consortium. I think we have the only B high school in the consortium.
I haven't looked, but I can.
I think we generally are among the high schools, our sixth area county consortium. And we hang well with just about every other district with, not the B high school. Close to could easily be a B high school. As a matter of fact, I thought they were going to get it before LaBelle. Because of the things that are going on there through career preparation and through acceleration, I thought that would come. So now what you need to do is, what we need to do is get the other things that are happening in Close to that need to be brought up. And some of those deal with math and academics that need to be addressed. And the principal is very well aware of those needs and he's already working on it.
Well, I like those, you know, I know you said that state's going to be coming in to help out Close to Middle School. And I, you know, I believe when you're struggling in the elementary school, those kids may have that possibility to do that in high school as well.
Two Ds in a row is the same as two Fs, remember that.
Oh, I know. I assure you.
Close to Middle is under the same gun that LaBelle Elementary would be under. And the state, that's not, oh, Flannery, that's the state saying that.
Well, Ms. Durst, thank you very much for now standing in his invitation. And let me know that chairman feels, I feel so good, a lot of good work is being done. Our kids can achieve, they will achieve, continue the longness, that's good. But since this card was here, I don't know how I feel to get so close last year to this year, but you keep doing whatever you're doing. And if I could find that point somewhere, we can.
Well, we're still looking for it. We're still looking for it.
Okay.
We're not giving up yet.
Thank you very much.
One more thing, can you provide a little insight on how our I-ready predictions align with the actual outcomes? I mean, I don't expect you to do it right now, but.
Right.
Dr. Bindig might be able to do that.
Yeah, we have a spreadsheet that Christie has put together and we can share that with you.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
Predictions.
Yep.
And it aligns well.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've looked at when we talked to, when I talked to other districts is they, we all are using our ready. Some are using it to fidelity or with fidelity, and that's proven the difference between our results. And sometimes we may not be using it with fidelity. And so that's, that's the big difference. Believe me, the most competitive group of people we have are elementary school principals. And I guarantee there are any looking under every nut, under every rock, searching the nuts and crannies to figure out what does this school need to have happen. And I've met with just about, well, I've met with all of them and it's happened.
Yes, I'll get that.
Okay, we're on to the last question.
Okay.
No, but I'll wait for my girl. Remember business? Okay. I have two things. I have number one is our new online school. What are we looking like within enrollment?
You know for sure, I have a meeting next week, next Wednesday with K-12. You may have noticed they've been doing an awful lot of advertising on television. And the initial report I have from them from Friday is that enrollment looks very good. But I don't have hard data. We're meeting with them next Wednesday.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I'd be, I'm just curious to see how we're doing with that.
Remember the first twenty school students from Henry County go in there, we still collect the FTE, which is a difference because when we were in Florida Virtual, students could still use Florida Virtual. We lost the FTE, but the first twenty, we collect that plus the two hundred thousand they're giving us.
Right. Okay. Very good. And then the other thing is, I know I asked you briefly about speaking with Commissioner Turner. And I noticed he's here tonight. Just wanted to see if maybe he would like to ask his questions.
I had asked for a meeting with Mr. Turner and I was under the impression we were going to have it yesterday. And when I called Coach Walker, he said he didn't, he never got a time.
Oh.
But I'm sure that's why the press and everyone is here, so that if we want, sure.
Oh, I wasn't aware that you spoke with, that you had a meeting set up with Commissioner Turner.
Well, we did, we had a meeting set up. Mr. Turner was out of town.
Okay.
And we scheduled it for yesterday, but we weren't able to come up with a time. So if you want to see what course of the light.
You got to set a meeting or something?
It didn't happen. We had scheduled, Coach Walker had called because I'd asked the principal and the coach to say, what is it we're after? And so we were going to set up a meeting. It was set up and it didn't happen. So Mr. Turner is here tonight.
I would rather you guys get a room together than to have a phone call or whatever it is out. Can we do that?
Open and well, yeah.
Can we do that, Mr. Turner?
You know, I just want to point out, Mr. Flannery, you routinely make comments that, you know, I mean, just right now, you just said, I invited the press here. That's why you're insinuating at least. Mr. Patala, when's the last time I spoke to you?
I don't.
I don't recall the last time I spoke with him.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I have no clue what you're talking about either. So you're implying once again, sir, you're putting words in my mouth. I apologize, but.
This is what I think you need to not do that.
Give me this afterwards, you guys give me the, so let's go to the next item.
I just, I think transparency is the best thing here, but obviously you all don't. So, you know.
Anything else, anyone have, y'all can talk about that one-on-one and we can work out whatever that is. Let them have it open out here and open like that. But anybody have anything else?
I have a couple of things. One would be a request to better utilize our district website. And for instance, the information that Ms. Durst put out, if we could link that in our website so it's easy for people to go and take a look at, including our, and what has inspired this was a conversation I had with a young lady who is doing an education project for school. And she was looking for data and she wanted to know why, speaking to Commissioner Turner's thing about transparency, she goes, why am I looking at other districts' websites and I can find this information and I can't find it on yours? And I said, well, I'll absolutely bring that forward. I do believe it is important to have, be transparent and have that, that information out there. So that's.
I didn't want to put it out before you saw it.
That's understandable.
So it's going on the website, that's our next plan.
Okay, fantastic. And the second one is, in the spirit of transparency, I wanted you guys to all know that I did travel up to my ethics commission hearing that I discussed with you before. The case was dismissed. There are, there's going to be no further action, but it was, I was exonerated with no probable cause. And they, they used the RUD Act in the second issue with the erroneous legal advice where they dismissed that allegation so they would not have to put a probable cause and hurt my, my record. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that I had been fully exonerated. The official final report will be out tomorrow and I'll provide, I'll forward that to Beverly and have her send that to you so you guys know where I stand on that.
We're especially happy to hear everything we've got for you. I understand your commitment to Henry County schools and appreciate that.
Thank you, Bill.
Anything?
I want to bring up something that I didn't mean to cause such concern with, and that is our army of teachers' decisions. You have to, as a board, decide that that's what we're going to do before that even happens. There is no deadline for you to do that. The issue and the reason I brought this up last week is we have one employee who is a guardian who has been placed in a classroom. That precludes that teacher from carrying a firearm because you have not decided. So it's not as if I want people to go because we meet, I have been subpoenaed by the statewide grand jury and we meet the requirements. We have met the requirements. We have an SRO on every campus. We have a, we have guardians on campuses. On two schools, we have school safety officers. So we have met the requirement. It's not as if it's a burning need, but I just wanted to know when I put that out, what is our, one day you're going to have to make decisions, okay? It doesn't have to be tonight, it doesn't have to be three weeks from now. I put a little survey on our website or on our Facebook page. It's not scientific, you know, but we know that people were able to vote once and we have eight hundred seventy-seven.
You can vote multiple times.
Oh, you could?
Yes, you could.
All right, then that's not what I'd asked to have happen. So we could either just pull it and redo it at some point, but right now, it's pretty evenly divided with fifty-one point four percent yes and forty-eight point six percent no.
What concerns me about that was when I, I saw it this morning and I clicked on it and looked at it, I actually got alerted that it was being shared through Wink News' Facebook page. And then I went there and looked and then we've got all these people from Lee County weighing in on it. And I'm like, oh, I mean, like maybe we should add a question, are you a Henry County resident?
Well, we can just, we'll just pull it and redo it because it's not an urgent need. It's just that we had, and I'd already talked with the principal to come up with the solution. And at this point in the year, it's tough to not have that teacher in the classroom because they are in a team leadership position in that grade level. And for her to find someone new, the principal finds someone new, is next to impossible. So next year, it might be that she looks at it and can put her in a situation where she does not have students assigned to that guardian and the guardian can be active. But right now, the guardian has been told, do not report to school armed because you have not made that decision.
Mr. Chairman.
And we don't, I mean, we're covered. In some schools, we have one, some schools have two, two schools have three. Okay, so we are covered. There comes a point where you have to kind of think, where's our liability with the number of people toting guns on campus? You know, because frankly, teachers bearing arms and serving this capacity is a whole other issue of protocol and training. For instance, if you have a teacher at Westside and they're called to duty, what do you do with the twenty students who are left alone in that classroom? And so that means another round of training to provide coverage for that students.
That's exactly, Mr. Chairman, that's why I would like to ask you, Mr. Flannery, is there something that we could discuss amongst the board to say, elementary school levels shouldn't, you know, we can make that exception, though, they're not going to carry because to leave twenty kids in a classroom unattended, that's a scary situation as it may be. But to leave those twenty kids as elementary kids in there, middle or high school kids, not quite as bad. You know, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'm just kind of curious, is there things like that that we could put in play there?
That's your call.
Mr. Chairman, if something happened and the guardian had to go, there are teachers next door, I mean, we're not talking across campus, especially for elementary, and the teacher could bring the students into that second classroom. I mean, it's not.
True.
Through science.
But then the transit through the hall, if there's not an adjoining door. And that could have been a problem at, in Fort Lauderdale. Because one of the issues is that that high school was that they had, the shooter was in the hallway. And so they had teachers who on one floor kept people hidden in the secret corner, in the safe corner, and nobody was hurt. But if you have that situation where the, for instance, and you can play any scenario in the world, you have the teacher who has to respond and there is no way to get those students into another class except in the hallway where the shooter is. Okay? And we could also, these are all just levels of protection. We're crazy not to think that it could happen, that it's never going to happen in Henry, I'm hoping it never happens in Henry, but it could. And we can take every precaution in the world and there may still be a loss of life somehow. And that's just not a pleasant issue to deal with.
In those situations with the guardians that are carrying, do they have to leave their classroom?
The guardians who we have now do not have students assigned to them.
If we have, I mean, just, okay, so, but do the guardians have to go out seeking the person? Is it law?
It would be similar to what would, when it happened in Fort Lauderdale with the SRO who did not enter the building.
Well, that's, and that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah. If they are training, the expectation, and part of our training here in Henry County is you will respond and you will take care of the problem.
Would we be able to maybe make them exempt if we allow teachers to carry? Is there a possibility for that exemption, for them not to have to leave their classroom? But if the shooter is in their proximity, they can take care of business.
They're all, you, these are questions that I don't have an answer to because it hasn't happened yet.
Right. I mean, that might be something that we could find out the legal realm of that. Is there a stipulation if we put, you know, that might help make the decision?
Information, if I like to speak. You want to deny me, I understand.
Paul? It's the chair.
Yes, sir.
Is this still a collaborative effort with the sheriff's office? It doesn't seem to be right now. It looks like you're making law enforcement decisions. Okay. Do you want me to answer?
Yes, sir.
When the guardian program was first passed year before last, it specifically says, the sheriff shall do this based on us recruiting those people who will be guardians, who have no students assigned. This year, the law says the sheriff, the sheriff will do this once the board decides that this is what they want to do. So that's the difference. That's why the board is in this discussion.
I'll just share, like, one of my concerns is I think about, you know, especially with us being under the Office of Civil Rights order. And administrator, not even administrator, teacher, somebody has a weapon on them and an allegation's made. And we already have people breathing down our necks about disproportionate discipline and disproportionate situations in Henry County. That could be devastating. I mean, and it could truly be devastating to, I mean, I know what baseless allegations I faced for, and it's nothing threatening somebody with a gun, but it's taken a year to resolve. And that puts you in a position to, if that allegation's made against Mr. Jones that this happens, then you've got to pull him out of that classroom while there's an investigation and, and the liability on them and even our liability with the Office of Civil Rights is tremendous on this. And, you know, one of the things I always think about is, are, you know, speaking to the situation with Scott Peterson in Broward County, is, you know, when we're asking people to do this on a volunteer basis, are we putting them in a position to lose their real jobs for their volunteer job? And.
Perhaps. Perhaps.
It's a difficult situation. I really do not agree with having teachers carry the gun inside the classroom, but we have guardians, whether we have a guardian doing the guardian job or a teacher doing the teacher job, just don't agree with having a teacher carry the gun inside the classroom with the students. So, but that's just my opinion. with the, with the students, so, but that's just my opinion. We all have a, have a chance to voice our opinion. But if we get voted by later, I'll talk about it.
No, I don't want to vote.
No.
Absolutely not.
I don't think you want to vote right now.
I, I think we need public discussion.
I think we should look, I would recommend that you look at the forum situation similar to what we did before.
Has anybody else in the state got guns in, in the classroom where a teacher carries?
I can't, it's been more controversial than the guardian, so I can't really give you a number. But just because everybody else is doing it and Henry County doesn't, doesn't make it the wrong thing to do, it's still a, a local option.
So, do we want to set up a forum then to allow the public, one on each side of the county, or what does the board think?
I think a forum is a better idea than a.
Do you want, do you want to do that? I mean, this is your decision.
I love thinking about it somewhere, I don't want to go that far.
You know, we're not, we're not rushed to make that decision, but.
Well, no, but I don't want to drag our feet out for six months. I mean, if we want to hear what the people have to say, I think that's an easy way to do it.
Bear in mind that six months is probably going to be a very ambitious schedule to get somebody in because they're gonna have to go through the same type of training that everyone else has to be. And so far, we've only had after a year, two classes. So, six months is a very ambitious time to get the psychologicals, the backgrounds and the training done before we actually have somebody in the class.
Right.
So, there, there really isn't that big a rush, but at some point, the board's gonna have to say yes or no.
But when I, when I'm, I, I didn't mean to get somebody in the train, what I meant is if we're waiting six months to even vote on it, then there's another six months before anybody's trained, so we're a year out, we're pushing a year out. If the, if the board decides to vote for it, I just think that to hear what the public has to say about it, I, I think at the end of the school year, let, let's have a couple of forums and, and see what, what the public says and then we can think about it. My opinion.
Okay, you have a discussion?
All right. At least I have, um.
So, what's the decision?
Uh, I don't want to talk.
It's table.
It's table.
I can't imagine.
You want to table that, the idea?
Why don't we put it on the agenda for the next meeting rather than getting forced to decide what you're gonna do? Why don't we put it on, which is next week? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir.
Earlier, when, uh, conversation was going on between you and Mr. Paletti, all I saw was two bulls getting louder, so I decided to just kind of let cool it down. Never was trying to be not transparent, but, uh, what I would like to do, uh, you gotta press here, you'll, you'll speak, sir.
Thank you so much, sir. And I understand Reverend Brown, you're trying to keep the form and that's your job of running the meeting, so I applaud that effort. Um, Mr. Paletti, you made a comment on the last board meeting, I, I don't know if it was, I think it was actually in this room, somewhere along the lines, I'm not gonna quote you verbatim, but, uh, if I don't like the answers that you're giving me, uh, then I don't need to be able to, I, I, I don't know if it was tattle-tale or, or essentially court them to try to get different answers. I have spoken to John Bassman, my school board representative on the Henry County School Board privately via electronic mail. Uh, I do, I do love the fact that email allows for a trail to be seen. More importantly, I like it because in, in my profession, with the many hats that I wear and I, and I lovingly wear them, it allows for me to have an easy reminder that's at my fingertips. I asked you via June third, uh, and Mr. Veal, who, who do I need to talk to? The actual, I think the, the email that I sent was, are you all the proper people to ask these questions of? And then there was a laundry list of questions, it was, it was a long sundry of things that I was trying to get at. The gist is this, you have a ninety-three million dollar budget, plus or minus.
Did I, did, did you get my response? Cause I thought I responded to that email.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty weak. Um, and, and so then I, I proceeded to ask numerous other people and no one can give me the answers. And, and, and listen, I am not being critical of you all as a school board, um, but I am gonna continue to ask these questions and it came to light tonight. It came to light tonight through the questions that Mr. Bassman asked, I don't think y'all know how many stipends are out there and, and what those stipends are going to. In the email that you sent to me, you said there are no K-12 dollars that are spent on athletics. Yes or no?
With the exception that we do pay for.
Insurance, supplements.
And insurance.
Yes, sir.
And.
Some capital costs depending on the need.
Depending on the needs.
Yes, sir.
That is a true statement.
Yes, sir.
K-12 dollars, unless I'm paying for people who are working with K-12 students, have to be spent in the classroom.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm correct about that.
Yes, sir. And those are, those are the details that I would love to note because as, as Ms. Carter, and I don't mean to put Melissa on the spot or anything, but as she can attest to, we've, we've had, I think, two very long discussions on trying to understand how we can crack the, the egg, if you will, of making Tiger Boosters better, more efficient with our dollars. Uh, in my lifetime, I've never seen a major capital improvement other than Colston Middle School being rebuilt and, uh, Colston High School being rebuilt. I think in nineteen eighty-nine was the first time I took a class into there. From a standpoint of what we've done to our athletic facilities over on that end, specifically I'm speaking to, we haven't had any major million dollar upgrades. I, I know that there's been a little bit of, of requests that are made out to different five oh one C threes and non-for-profits and other people that do underwrite things like that, but I have a hard time as someone who's very fiscally minded of going and asking people, can you, can you tell me, can you contribute to this? But I can't show you what I'm doing with every dollar and cent that is already being appropriated to those, to those items. And so, you know, that, that was the gist, that is still the gist of my questions. You know, I know that you all give, the school board gives a fifty thousand dollar check, so, more or less, to the city of Colston to underwrite facilities for that.
Not through K-12.
Absolutely, and those, those are the questions that I'm trying to get on paper so I can see that.
But I thought that's what I answered.
Yeah.
I thought that I answered that there would be through our one point five mil, some opportunity depending on need and request.
Yeah.
To fund these and that's where the fifty thousand goes to the city of Colston.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not coming out of the K-12 classroom?
Yep, understood.
All right, so, we also have to keep the schools running, the lights, the air conditioner and all of those things with that one point five mil.
Yes, sir.
And from time to time, based on a particular request from a school, usually through me or as when I was a principal, what can you do to help us with this project? Sometimes we can go half depending on the project. But when I do say that, whether I'm using one point five or any other source, if it's our money, then our people have to use it.
And when you say one point five, you mean one point five mils, not one point five million, correct?
One point five mil.
Yes, sir.
Generates about three point something million dollars in Henry County.
Yes, sir.
Now, if, if the boosters, for example, build a clubhouse with their money, I don't have any say-so over who's using that. But if they come to the district and say, we need a new weight room at LaBelle High School.
Yep.
What can you do? And I do that, then that weight room becomes use, useful for everyone, athletes and students.
If you use from the one point five mils that are appropriated.
Yes, sir. But remember, K-12 is limited because the state says that is for K-12 classroom education.
Yep.
With the exception of some of the things that I can pay for based on the fact that these people are working with our students. Now, forever and a day, our total list of supplements has been published in the appendix of the employment contract. There is nothing hidden about that. Now, you take that index number and apply it to the beginning teachers and there is a math issue that's going on there, you can figure out how much is going to each person for what, okay? We will simplify that and have something come up with, this is the total number for each school, but it is there, all right? Now, in terms of spreadsheets, we don't have them. Those don't, and I think I said that in the email, but some of the things you're asking for just don't exist, okay?
You didn't say that.
Well, they, they just don't exist, all right? Therefore, it's hard for me to produce them. And I believe I said, if you look here, there is this amount of money that you can access. If you look here, there is this amount of money. Then you have, I didn't say that?
No, sir, you actually said, uh, before I forget, the schools rely heavily on gate receipts for these incomes, uh, you can look at internal, and then I was directed to go and talk to the internal book counts. And it was obvious to me that there was a lot of chatter that happened behind the scenes. There was a couple principals that I spoke to and people were like, hey, I don't really want to talk to you about this anymore cause I'm scared. And it's fine, I, 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 here's, here's the gist of why I'm here.
You accuse me of throwing things out, I never spoke to anybody about this.
Okay.
Okay, so, while you're, you say it, I, I say things, I never spoke to anybody about this.
Okay.
But by telling you that when, when they rely on their receipts, that was giving you the information to go get the information, Carson, they cannot say no.
I'm not, I'm not.
It has public record.
I'm not being combative to say, I don't want to go to the school bookkeeper. Here's my thing, Mr. Paletti, and you and I both know, everyone here that can hear this knows, Colston, LaBelle, there is a divide that's tangible from time to time. Fair statement? The moment Carson from Hooker's Point slash Colston Tiger Boy that came over here and played in LaBelle and did things, starts going to the LaBelle High School bookkeeper and saying, hey, I need to engage in your internal account, that's gonna get sideways quick. And it should, I think that it should, if it's coming from Superintendent Paletti, to simply give a basis of, hey, what, what do we have in this account, what do we have in that account? Because here's what I'm driving at. I've asked colleagues in Hardy, I've asked colleagues not in all of, of, of Manatee and Sarasota County, but I've asked them at like Venice High School, for example, some of the examples that they do, which I think is the best management practice that needs to be really, really vetted on, in our internal booster club. Uh, Hardy has some good examples, DeSoto County has a couple good examples, Apache County has a couple good examples. They all glean and have, I think there's different things that we can glean from. But when I talk with the secretary, if you will, of the Tiger Boosters and she explains to me, um, round numbers here, the softball team gets around four grand a year and, or forty-two hundred dollars a year and four thousand of that goes to underwriting refs. I'm just like, man, we're, we're putting them behind the A-ball coming out the gate. But that, but that is coming out of the stipend, it's four odd stipends, that's coming out of the gate receipts from Colston High School. Whereas to me, I want to know, and now I know that that one point five mil generates X number of dollars and that is divided over X number of things, of facilities, you name it, whatever it may be.
But not you name it, it has to be capital.
Not, not related, related to K-12 and it can be spent on people that are walking the streets of Henry County.
No, it has to be capital.
It has to be capital.
Okay, but it can be used, to, to quote you, it can be used to build a weight room and the moment that we use that one point five mil allocation, we, we can open that up to everybody that's in the, in the building.
By everybody, I mean K-12 students.
Yes, sir. You can't say, you can't say it's just athletic building at that point.
No.
Yep, exactly. It's kind of like title nine dollars in the NCAA, very, very similar. Uh, the, the gist of what I'm driving at is this, again, I'll, I'll echo this, refs, utilities, field and facility maintenance, costs that are annual, what are those to our entire athletic budget? Hey, if you want to, if you want to overwhelm me with dollars and cents and show me what that is to, to our band department, to FFA, to all those different things, I would love to see those things. I, I am trying to make sure that as I go to different people that are out there that are wanting to underwrite the programs for Henry County, not just Colston High School, not just LaBelle High School, but Henry County, I'm wanting to be able to hit them with facts, with dollars and cents and, and allocate it back to what it is, number one, that's the first thing I want to do. The number two thing that I want to do is that I, I anticipate a world where Pete Walker is gonna retire. He ain't a spring chicken, right? And, and he's getting wore out and it's hard to be a coach every year. I don't even know who the head coach is, it's Coach Davidson at LaBelle High School, right? He's a homegrown product, correct? We, we need to have an arsenal that we know what the dollars and cents are that are sitting there, that are available, that are gonna come from contract form. And then I think that the booster club needs to know what they have sitting there that can now be pushed towards these contracts because when the right candidate comes along and you're only able to, you, you can do this, you can, you can either do it, um, out there in the, in the real right world, or I can guarantee you that it happens other place, Mr. Paletti, but go ahead.
I'm pretty sure it does, but I'm not sure a booster club is in itself doing that because I believe we have a policy that prevents that.
Okay, well, I love, you said policy, we need to re, re-race that.
It's coming, it's coming. Because I know full well that in that particular coach's place, I worked with Robert Egley and figured out how much I can do through my sources. I know that there are other people and I prefer not to know all of the details who are supplementing him. That's, that's fine, that happens across the world.
I'm not talking about him specific, I'm talking about in the future.
It happens.
When we're, when we're bringing in that rock star.
We have to be careful when you start supplementing of where that supplement's coming from, okay? I don't necessarily want to know, but I also don't want to know that it is violating a proposed or a current policy. And if it is not policy right now, it is in the bill and has been in the bill for a while, we're still catching up with some of the bill, some of the policies that we're doing. Now, I feel comfortable with what our booster clubs are doing on both ends. And really, had we had this meeting, I could have answered some of these questions and I know what you were coming up with or what you were coming from. And I'm, I'm sorry we weren't able to meet yesterday, that we needed to, that we had to have this discussion here and that's fine. But we can get that total as long as you understand, when I give you that total, the various sources of that money. Because I can't really look at Mr. McCarthy and say, how much do you chisel out each year for said case at Colston High School or LaBelle Middle School or wherever? Because it varies from year to year and I think that's what I did respond, that as the need arises based on the requests and our ability to pay, we do participate. Now, it's, you can look at athletic facilities in larger districts and drool over what they're able to do, but those larger districts are generating quite a bit more money than their one point five mil. That's why you can go to Amocley and see athletic, or, or athletic facilities that are to die for. That's because the Naples and Margot Island tax base is supplementing that and they generate far more money than our three point three mil. And they are able to do those types of things that we can't, okay? Which if, when you go to your other sources, that is a huge argument to make. In order for us to have world-class facilities, we need to have more than what we have access to. So, am I getting you correctly? You want to know district-wide?
What the one point five mil generates?
What the what?
What the one point five mil that, that allocation generates and then what that goes out to on an annual basis? That's the number one question I would have to ask.
What point? That was just passed by the board.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Here it is, right here.
I actually wrote it down, I think.
Okay. Now, we would have to then look at Mr. McCarthy because I don't think anybody wants to say we want to enhance athletics at the cost of the classroom. I really think that is a dangerous, that would be a dangerous stance to make.
No, I, I can't necessarily argue that point, but I'm dying to know what those annual costs are as it relates to athletics because as I visit with.
From the one point five.
As I visit with certain people, yes, sir. You know, I, I actually had a statement made to me that the reason why Tiger Boosters has taken on the burden of paying for cane field, and I don't even know what that actual burden is, is because Al Morrell, so we're going back how many years now? You know, denied, denied the district the ability to handle that field and he wanted to be able to have care, custody, control. Well, you know, that gets back to, to my man Darryl Harris and, and I love him to death and I always quote him because he says, well, that's just the way we've always done it. And, and I struggle with that because I know just as well as, as you all know, how many dollars and cents we don't have and how we need to be as efficient as we can be. But as someone who actively engages our community and our region and our state and some of our federal partners to help us to, to move this ship down the path, so to speak, and get it back to port, um, I just understand that there, there is a finite number that we can keep going out and, and asking the same horse as time and time again to underwrite things. And so, some of them are asking me, I am just being the person that I am, wanting to know where those dollars and cents are arriving at. And, uh, I, I think it's a reasonable request. I put it out to my school board member after I put it out to you because, because I was interested to know, you know, a, a question that I've asked multiple times. And I, and I've talked to Darryl and I've talked to Mitch and I've talked to Commissioner Swindle pre-board meeting saying, just in case y'all hear that I'm, that I'm stirring up this pot, the answer is absolutely because I want to know, how are we, how are we arriving at these dollars and cents? Because I want to know, how are we, how are we arriving at these dollars and cents? What are we doing with our facilities? How does all that, how does all that get generated? Where do we go?
Okay, out of the 1.5, you want to know how much is spent in athletic support slash cost, whatever.
Yes, sir. Hard cost.
Hard cost for capital projects.
Yes, sir. Along with, if you could, if you could arrive at any other annual.
That's what I'm trying to work out, out with you. That would include some of the work that we've done with cane field that is paid for by insurance. Do you want that number?
You can throw me as many dollars and cents and details as many as you would like.
Individually through, and I don't, you have to understand, I don't have any control over booster money.
Absolutely, understood.
So that's.
So I don't see how you have a policy. You said you can't give it to somebody, but I understand y'all don't do it.
Pardon?
Yes, another thing that I was, I was going to debate with you all, but I can tell everybody's getting tired of this conversation and I am as well. But I don't see how you can have a policy that says you can't spend booster money on X, but yet we're saying we're going to create one that, that doesn't allow us to underwrite X, Y, or Z.
It's, it depends, it all depends with salary and payroll and employment law. Okay, so that's where that comes. I don't, I'm no more ask Melissa or anybody else, what are the boosters spending on, whatever? So that's going to be a question mark.
Yep.
But then I can look at internal accounts with receipts and then determine what those receipts are. Now, when you take those receipts, decisions are made at each school on what, just, just as if a principal calls me and says, what can you help me with to build this? The principal slash AD head coach goes to the booster club and says, I have this much money. What can you help me with on this? Because one year, and it's, it almost is like you need to see a range. Because one year, the athletic or the boosters may say, we helped softball with $4,000. Three and a half thousand goes to getting the refs there. But then there could be some years that the booster club goes up to 12,000 because they need new uniforms.
Yep.
Okay, so we need to factor that. The number I'm going to give you or get you is going to be, and I don't disagree with what you're asking for. I just wanted to see, okay, I don't even care why you want to know. Okay, that's not my business, but I wanted, I tried to put you in the right lane. If you wanted to say, Paul, that is not the way I want to do it. This is going to cause me a problem when I try to get information from LaBelle. Okay, then we go again. And we make sure, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do. I'm trying to find out now what it is you want. And so I will get that, but that target, that number is going to be in generalities.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, I can make it, I can make some of it concrete, some of it not. Because frankly, the booster club can say, sorry. Now, having said what I said about a policy, since I still don't know what the booster club pays or what their budget is, they can do whatever until they get caught at it or something happens, all right? So I get you. I get what you're saying. But I think you're going to see that the number is substantial because back in the day when I was principal, a quarter of a million dollars ran through the internal accounts at LaBelle High School 20 years ago.
This is all gate receipts.
That's, well, basically gate receipts, it might be candy sales, yearbook sales, stuff like that. But a quarter of a million dollars 20 years ago was coming through LaBelle High School. It was, it's probably more at Closton.
Well, the last thing I would just leave out with is I will be coming back to lobby y'all after we get our dollars and cents from a finite perspective. From what I've been educated by our booster club, it does seem like uniforms come out of the booster club. Pretty much every district I've talked to, and I challenge y'all to find a district that does it differently, they, they have a rotation basis and those are, those are not K-12 dollars, but those are, those are 1.5 mil dollars that, you know, they do that. And I just think that those, that, that uniform cost as it relates to the Tiger Boosters, I think is going to end up being the number one cost.
I don't think anybody's ever asked us about this.
I don't think they have either.
Well, then, what, I don't think we really have a problem.
Yes, sir.
But we need to look at it. We need to make sure it's there. We need to make sure, because on top of everything else, we've had to do this past year. We spent $950,000 on hardening schools out of that 1.5 mil money.
Yes, sir.
So be, be aware that the schools, the classroom is going to come first. The K-12 money is going to be limited into what we pay with people who work with children, with students. And then we can go from there, but I can get you the money from the other sources.
Yes, sir. Last thing I would close with, and this really will be my final thing, is that I don't think you're going to find a bigger supporter of public school education than myself. And, and I think, you know, y'all know that. I, I want to commend y'all on passing the budget and moving through so many details on your board meeting as efficiently as you did. I appreciate you for putting me in check, Mr. Brown. You obviously read the nonverbal communiqué that was boiling out of my ears. And Mr. Pellet, I look forward to chatting with you offline in much greater detail about this subject.
We can do that. This is exactly how the whole situation with Closton, the city of Closton started with this discussion.
Yep.
Hey, we need some help.
Yep.
Okay, let's look at it. But now we'll remind you that Closton city decision, our, our part is still controversial.
Yes, and, and our money is as well. I think we're up to 175. When I say our, I mean the Hendry County Board of County Commissioners, I think we're up to 175 now. And that is a bone of contention amongst someone like a constituent. So, you know, we got to bear all those things in mind. But thank y'all for your time. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mr. Bassman. We appreciate y'all. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Any other comment? Did you raise your hand?
Is this the kind of thing Larry Worth would have handled a couple of years ago?
I'm sorry, what did he say?
Is this the general subject, the kind of thing of vendors and money that Larry Worth would have been handling?
That, that's how it happens now. It goes through Mr. McCarthy, okay? So that's where it happens. It would come through me. I would give it to Larry. It comes through me. I give it to Kevin. Kevin calls me and says, we have this. It, it comes from the schools. Yeah, but that's, that's how it happens. Now, the Closton thing, and I'm, I'm going to get rid of, you're going to get rid of me. The Closton issue with that money was not through Larry. That was direct from the commission to me. And so we bargained and negotiated that.
Okay.